And I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting for the Natrona County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 to order. Before we go to roll call. Are you? She's calling our clerk. I'd like to introduce our newest county commissioner, Commissioner Nicolason. Peter Nicolason. Last week, the Natrona County Republican Party interviewed 15 individuals. First, I'd like to thank all 15 of them for willing to step up and put their name in and go through the process. We were very fortunate to get three extremely qualified candidates, of which we interviewed this morning, and we ended up selecting Commissioner Nicolason. And he was sworn in immediately thereafter before he could change his mind. So.
Hello. You're connected now.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're almost ready. We apologize you ran a little late downstairs. With that, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio.
Thank you. Part of the reason we have a new commissioner is we lost Commissioner Brooke Kaufman. Brooke was our vice chair. At this point, we need to elect a new vice chairman.
Mr.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to suggest that we elect Jim Milne as our new vice chair.
Second. So you're not suggesting, you're nominating.
I'm nominating. Well, you know.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Hendry, to elect Commissioner Milne as the vice chair. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands in our nation, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
I have the pleasure of issuing the following proclamation. Whereas the Casper-Natrona County Health Department was established in November of 1954 by a positive vote of the citizens of Natrona County to meet the needs of Casper and Natrona County, starting with environmental health and good community sanitation. And whereas the Casper-Natrona County Health Department has led the way in providing care during the COVID-19 response through testing, vaccination and treatment, treatment of communicable diseases, and immunizations through the disease prevention clinic, providing community support for emergency preparedness by serving the needs of Natrona County residents from pregnancy to the end of life through its maternal and child health and adult health programs, and providing health education on a variety of subjects, and providing safety and health inspections in the places the community lives and eats, in daycares and where people recreate. And whereas the Casper-Natrona County Health Department has directly served over 35,000 citizens in 2021 through client visits, educational contacts, and inspections through its various programs, and is always looking for opportunities to expand and provide needed services that are needed. And whereas the Natrona County Health Department has made many outstanding contributions during the last 68 years that have helped our community and continues to prevent disease, promote health, and protect our citizens. Now therefore, as the chairman of Natrona County Commissioners, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 22nd as the Casper-Natrona County Health Department Week. And I would ask everyone to recognize and celebrate the achievements of this remarkable agency. And we are fortunate to have us, have today with us our director, Anna Kinnick. If you'd like to, would you like me to sign this and you could come and get it?
Sure.
Okay. Or I can give it to you later.
Yeah. Give up their opposing guilt.
Okay.
Shouldn't she have to give a speech?
No speeches tonight. That's later in June. Thank you, sir.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hendry, second by Commissioner Milne to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on anything on the agenda? There being none, all those in favor of the resolution or of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next item is Resolution 7-22, establishing change in precinct boundaries due to the recent, this year's census changes. Chair to entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion that we entertain the approval of the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner North, second by Commissioner Nicolason. Report from Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, the legislature is required to determine legislative districts according to population every 10 years. Pursuant to that law, this act creates new legislative districts based on the 2020 census. This redistricting resulted in an addition of a new Senate and House district in Natrona County and also represents 24 precinct changes. In addition, the city of Casper changed ward boundaries to meet their population deviation as well. This change caused nine ward changes. Pursuant to 227102A, notice was posted on the county's official website. It was also published for two consecutive weeks in the newspaper, and a notice was also sent to the county chairman of each political party. Once this resolution is approved, notice will be sent to the Secretary of State, chairman of each political party, and all registered electors pursuant to statute 227104. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Hendry.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, could you tell us about when you think those, the letters will go out to people to tell them what area they're in and so that they kind of have an idea?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hendry, they will need to be out by April 25th. So I have five days from this resolution being passed. So the goal is to have them out by April 25th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'd just like to make a quick comment on the process. Clerk Good and her staff did an incredible job in this redistricting process. The requests that were made through the legislative process, in some cases, required almost inhumane feats to be done to try and meet the demands that were placed on them every time they made a quick change. The ripple effect for drawing district boundaries is something that you have to watch and really look at and understand how much time and effort and absolute skill her staff displayed in coming up with this. So I'd just like to publicly thank Tracy and her staff for their efforts in this process.
Thank you.
And with that, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the approval of Resolution 07-22 establishing new change in precinct boundaries signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We have a presentation tonight regarding the Casper Mountain land use. How would you like to proceed on this? Good evening, Ms. Milne.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. Megan Milne, Senior Planner. I just have a little bit of background information, and we have a short presentation for you from the consultants at Logan Simpson, if that's okay. Holly will get it up. And for approximately the past 10 months, the Development Department's been working in conjunction with Logan Simpson to update the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. We held two public meetings over the course of the plan update to solicit input from the citizens of Natrona County. We had meetings both in town and at sites on the mountain to solicit ideas and present the plan drafts. We also put citizen surveys on the website, the Facebook page, and had over 50 respondents with those. Stakeholder input was key to the development of this updated plan as the goal of staff was to strive for a citizen-based planning effort focused on what residents see for the future of Casper Mountain. A lot of time and effort was spent on the 2004 Casper Mountain Plan, and the efforts of the past months have attempted to build on the work completed in 2004. Logan Simpson focused on updating data and charts, and however, the majority of the plan update is focused on reconfirming the direction of the goals and policies and the future land use map within the plan. And so the ultimate success of the plan depends on how well it is carried out. While not officially adopted regulations, the plan is designed to be a guide to assist the county in accomplishing the goals set out in the plan, as well as in the 2016 Natrona County Development Plan. Future amendments to our development regulations will work to ensure the regulations further the goals provided in the plan. And staff would just like to thank all the citizens who put time and effort into the plan update. We're hopeful this plan will serve as a guide for successful development on the mountain for the next five to 10 years. So with that, I'll ask Melissa to come up, and we just have a short PowerPoint for you.
Great, thanks, Megan. So my name is Melissa Ruth, part of the Logan Simpson consultant team working with the county on the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. We are also working on the Natrona County zoning resolution update.
Can I just, just for the record, just get your name and address for the record? Your address?
My address?
Yes.
Yeah. Melissa Ruth, 2659 Devil's Tower Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Okay. So like Megan said, a pretty quick presentation. I'll give a little bit of an introduction, background overview of the project, go through the public outreach that we did, key changes, and then kind of our next steps moving forward. So initial reasons for the plan update. This came out of the kind of first round of stakeholder feedback from the zoning resolution stakeholder interviews, where we identified some needed changes to the MR1 and II zone districts, their standards, densities, and uses. When we went back to look at the guiding document for these zone districts, which is the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, the standards described in the MR1 and II zone districts do match, or did match, the 2004 land use plan, highlighting that there was potentially an issue with the Casper Mountain Plan not reflecting the current conditions of the area. And they therefore need to identify desired future character for the area, especially impact on septic and water systems. The plan timeline, we started in September with kickoff meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a public open house and online questionnaire. And then we did existing conditions review and an internal plan audit. Through December, or December through February, we drafted the plan, including an updated future land use map, revised goals and policies based off of the feedback from the first public open house, and then released the plan, the full draft plan for a public open house and review mid-February. That plan was available for people to comment on until March 7th, which brings us to where we are now, in that last box, with draft plan review meetings with you all and with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then final plan edits and development and moving through adoption. So the first public engagement, like I said, was in September. We did a listening session in mid-October as well to hear public, just public feedback on the plan, what other things we need to focus on for the update, and then hosted our first open house end of October. That open house was up at Hogedon. And then we had a public questionnaire that was opened through November 12th, and a big ideas wall where people could leave any ideas about the plan or any updates that we needed to look at through the end of November. The focus of this open house and this series of public engagement was to look at the 2004 goals, policies, and identify if there were any policies that needed refinement for the actual draft plan. The second series of public engagement was the open house in February. Like I said, we had the online draft plan available for comment through March 7th. We did receive quite a few public comments. We fielded phone calls, emails, all sorts of different comment forums, and that plan was also available for comment in the Planning Department office. So key changes, as Megan said, we really didn't update a whole lot. A lot of what we did was confirming the goals, policies with the community. We did update the future land use map with a smaller commercial area around, kind of up in Hogedon, and then revised the future land use categories to tailor more to the Casper Mountain uses, as well as updating existing conditions, data, and maps and trends. So next steps, taking any suggestions or changes from you all from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have gone through the one round of public comment already on the draft plan, which is what you, the draft you see now is the result of that. And then moving through Planning and Zoning and B O C C hearings, following the adoption of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, we'll look to implement the plan in the MR1 and II zone districts through use changes, potential use changes, dimensional standards, and anything else we need to look at. This is the resulting future land use map. I popped it up here so that if anyone has any questions, we can reference it. It is in the land use plan. So I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions tonight? Commissioner Hendry.
Just a comment. We talked today in our work session too, and about getting the information out to the public, and with all your public meetings and information, you pretty well got to everybody. You guys are thinking you got to everybody, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All righty.
All right. We'll move on to public hearings. We have two tonight. Now, Clerk, the public hearing open for the consideration of ZC 22-001, a request to rezone Prop. 2 Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision from RAM, ranching, agricultural, and mining to Commercial C. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Natrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to speak or for or against to approach the lectern when called upon and state your name and address for the record. At this time, I would ask Ms. Milne for a staff report.
Hi, yes. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Board. Again, it's case number ZC 22-001. The applicants are Lori McCartel and Alan Patton, and they are proposing to rezone Lot 2 of the Canal Ridge Simple Subdivision from RAM to C Commercial District. This property is located on the south side of State Highway 220, just west of the intersection of Cortez Road. I don't think I ever say that right. It's, the lot is 12 acres in size, and the minimum lot size for commercial is two acres. The parcel is currently vacant, and it is surrounded by vacant grasslands, also zoned RAM, and the Windy Waters RV Mobile Home Park to the east, which is also zoned commercial. There are no planning considerations. However, staff has some information related to the development plan. The rezoning request is in line with the goals of the current Natrona County Development Plan. The parcel falls within the Alcova Pathfinder neighborhood of the rural planning areas, and recommendations for that neighborhood include ranching, recreation, and zonings of RAM and some commercial. Adjacent to the subject parcel are other C Commercial zoned parcels, and the subject property is also in the commercial center or commercial hub of Alcova and would further the goals of encouraging development in the Alcova area. All future development would be subject to the commercial zoning district requirements, and any future division of the property would be subject to all county subdivision regulations and development standards. And the Planning Commission recommended at their April 12th, 2022 meeting to, of approval of the rezoning request, and staff also recommends approval. And I can answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is in the audience.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Milne? All right. Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of ZC 22-01 to Good evening.
Hi. I'm Lori McCartel, so I'm one of the two.
Okay.
And.
We just need your address also.
Yes, Alan Patton, in 22850 Highway 220, Alcova.
All right. Thank you.
And we, we used to live across the highway from this. We sold our place there a couple of years ago. My husband's still, Alan's still there probably 50% of the time, working on projects that he needs to complete to actually finish up there. But we, we bought this piece of property. It's a pretty unique place. Part of it is pretty rugged, hilly, a lot of gullies, and we have a cabin that we're working on there. But this 12 acres that we split off is pretty flat, really lends itself to a different use than just having a little cabin on there. It butts up against other commercial land and the campground there. There used to be a trailer cart court, but now is becoming a campground. So we really think that it needs to be, have a different use, different purpose. Alcova, you know, is a, is a great place. We raised our three kids there. It's a, you know, just a wonderful place, but things are slowing down there, too. I mean, the school's closed now because there aren't any kids. There's a nice park down by the river that doesn't get a whole lot of use. It's getting a lot more traffic during, especially during the summer, for people who are coming in and needing, potentially needing services. A lot of fishermen, it's just a lot of people from Colorado and everywhere else. So it just seems like it would be nice to have a piece of land that could, in the future, grow into providing more commercial uses. One of the issues with it, too, it seems to be a kind of a, I don't know, a hot button topic for some people who live in Alcova right now, partly because there was a rezone attempt a few years back, but that was different than what we're planning. Another issue is the access. And by, you know, growing, having our kids grow up there and living there for, well, we've been there since 2005, I guess it was, we know the road is pretty, pretty wickedly busy during the summer, and it's, you know, the speed limit's pretty, pretty high for that stretch. In order to get access onto the highway in a safe way, what we need to do is, and we've talked to the, to the highways department a number of times, or on the phone, and I've been with, gone in there once to talk to them. What we need to do is have a, a traffic study done, but that comes after we decide what we want to do with it. I'm not to the stage yet of talking to people to see what they would like to see. I've gotten input from some people in the community, as in, it would be nice to have, you know, some rentable business space for people, if other businesses could come in. There's no place for them to do that right now. Affordable employee housing would be good because there's no place for people to actually live. I mean, it's hard for the businesses that are actually in Alcova now to hire people. So if there were people, you know, a place that people could actually live, that wanted to work there, that would be a help, too. But we need to go through that whole process of trying to get other ideas about what would, would be appropriate for that area. We're not going to put in anything that's not going to work. So everything's going to require a lot of study. And I hate to put the, well, we hate to put the cart before the horse. Last fall, I spent a bit of time talking to Brooke Kaufman, too, who's not here now, so, about things. So it just seems like we need to rezone it first before we get to the stage of figuring out exactly what we want to do. Once we have a plan, we need to go to this engineer who is now in Cody, and they would do a traffic study. And they would tell us what we would need to do to the highway to make it a safe, and make it safe to get onto the highway and off the highway. So that's kind of the stage that we're at. It's, this is a, like a very preliminary thing. The highway speed evidently is, is another hot button issue because people who live in Alcova would like it to be lowered. I talked to Chad Agar yesterday, and he was saying, it's just not going to happen. They're putting speed measurement devices out this week to figure out how fast everybody's going, and that will lead them to determine whether or not they want to lower the speed limit. But it's a, they have a rule where if 85% of the people are going 70, then they're not going to, or at or above 70, they're not going to lower it. Unless Alcova became an incorporated community, an incorporated town. Well, we're not there yet, but, you know, it's, I think it's prime for, for something to happen, more, more services to be there. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah. Commissioner Nicolason.
Good evening, Ms. McCartel. You indicated that there was a zoning attempt to change a few years back, and you said this, that was different than what we're planning. Can you provide a little more information? I wasn't around back then.
Okay. Yeah. And it was probably about three or four years.
2016.
2016. Okay. So a while back. And I, from, my recollection is, they were taking the 48 acres originally, they're dividing it into four pieces because there are four access points along that highway, along the, along the piece of land. Four, what do you call them, pasture access points or field access points? So they wanted to divide it into four pieces, and it was going to be zoned.
Urban ag.
Urban ag. So each piece would enter onto that, to the highway through their field access points. So that was a little different. When we talked to the highways department, what we are doing is taking those four access points, reducing them to two, because every time you have an interaction, you're coming on to the speeding highway or fast highway, it's a problem. So we are, we're giving up two of them, we're moving one of them so it's in a more appropriate, safe place. And that's kind of what we've agreed to do with the, with the highways department. And instead of urban ag, which, there isn't any urban ag around there, we're doing, we're splitting it up into commercial, or rezoning it out to commercial, which is adjacent to other commercial property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Milne.
Good evening. Thanks for coming in. You said for your plans, commercial plans, I'm not asking you to tip your hand or anything like that, but your future plans for this property, do you believe they will be kind of fit, hand in glove with this, this community? Or are you looking at, I'm just kind of searching here where. Or are you looking at, I'm just kind of searching here, where, where it'll be an enhancement for the community?
It, it will be an enhancement for the community. I mean, it's, it's difficult to say. I mean, I, as I say, this is kind of a red button issue for people, because there, there are people who have lived in the area for a long time, they don't want any changes, no matter what. Um, and that's just hard to, you know, I mean, that's the way they feel, that's going to be the way it is. Um, what we plan on doing is, if we do any building, it's probably going to be something that looks like it grew from the land, not something that doesn't look like it belongs. Um, and it's going to be a use that we determine based on research and trying to get some, um, public input as to what they would like to see. Um, there are, you know, we've had a number of ideas. Um, a coffee bakery shop, someplace you could get together, um, during the mornings would be great. I mean, there, uh, some people have said that they, you know, really like a place that fixed tires. I mean, yeah, but it would be, you know, our ideas are evolving and they're changing, and it may be that we come up with something, and we give that to the, uh, to the people that are doing the traffic study. They come back and say, you know, you're going to have to put half a million dollars into the road, and we might say, uh, maybe not. Um, you know, we might do something else. Um, it may also be something where, with this piece of land, that's in a, it's a private location within the Alcova community, that we come back to the county and say, is there something that we can do on a partnership basis that you think is a good, a good purpose to put this for and put this to? And we are willing to partner with anybody who, who would like to, you know, help us out on that. So it's, it's, it's kind of difficult, because if we, if we come up with something that doesn't work for the highways, it's, it's not going to work for us. So we've got to be somewhat flexible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? A quick question, uh, as it relates to YDOT. Did they tell you that if there is a high volume going in and out, that they would not grant you an access?
No, no. They did not tell us that.
Okay. I was just curious, because a lot of times they, uh, anytime you have a lot of traffic going in and out, they're not really inclined to open up another access onto the highway.
Well, yeah, and I think they may, for them, it was a big deal for us to give up two of the accesses already, just to limit the amount of, or the number of places that people were, were going onto the road. I did also ask them whether they would even entertain the idea of, um, using that, oh, there's the staging area, um, sand and gravel dump right there, if they could move that, and they said that they actually could move it. But if they would use that for a, um, a frontage road, so you could come off of Cortez Road and backtrack and have a frontage road just parallel to, to 20, so that it would get to us, it would also, um, front with the people who are currently landlocked that are adjacent to us, too. They've got temporary legal access, but have been told that if they sell, they're not going to be, be able to have the access. So that would be one thing. Um, when I talked to YDOT, they, they said no, but they didn't say hell no. You know, they were, they were a bit more gentle about it, so we're looking at options.
Okay. All right. Uh, I guess, so you're, you're, uh, you're not asking for a subdivision at this point, you're just asking for a rezone?
They've cut, they, we have the simple subdivision plat ready to go, and so with the smaller lot, then, uh, it, it won't meet the minimum lot size for RAM, so they need to complete a rezoning. And once the plat's filed, then the rezone will be in effect.
So I, I, I-
Does that make sense?
Sorry. I, I guess what I was getting at is that, is that after the rezone, is it going to be one plat, or is it going to automatically get subdivided into five?
If the rezone is approved, it will be subdivided into two, a 12-acre piece and a 40-something acre piece.
Okay, okay. I don't know, for some reason, I was thinking that it, the commercial part was going to get-
Further subdivided, no.
Not at this point?
Not at this time.
Okay.
They just requested for two parcels out of the larger parcel.
Okay.
Well, parcels need the minimum size.
Uh, the, the one subject to the request before you would not, so that's why we're holding the plat until we see if the rezoning is approved or not, because I don't want to file the plat and have a lot that doesn't meet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of ZC 22-001? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm not sure if it's in favor or against, but I'd like to speak because-
Whoa, whoa, you're-
So I don't know where I should speak.
How about you come out right now? If you're right in between for and against, let's have you come up now.
My name's Dave Ondryzick, and I live in Alcova, 22364 State Highway 220. Uh, I never received a letter about this stuff that's going on, and I'd like to ask the county commissioners why I didn't. I know I live in between the post office and the bar, and they both received letters, but I didn't, so I don't know why I was cut out of it, but I'd like to give you my thoughts about the whole thing, and, like I said, I'm not sure if I'm for it or against it. What I've heard here tonight is not quite enough information that I'd like to hear. I'd like to know what exactly we plan on doing with this commercial property, for one, rather than just leaving it up in the air. There's a, a few businesses that might not be too bad in there, and there's a few that could be terrible. And I don't want to really get into all that, but I need more information about what Lori and Alan actually plan on doing, because this could go bad really quick. I mean, we could have a strip club in there, for all I know, and I wouldn't want that at all. And there's several other businesses that I wouldn't like to see in Alcova, but there are a few that would be nice. So I think that we need to pin them down a little bit more, and exactly what they plan on doing, and, and go from there. I've heard a lot of rumors in Alcova, there's a lot of talk going around, and, and I've heard anywhere from they're going to put in another post office, and I kind of like the one we have. I heard they're going to put in an ice cream shop, and I kind of like the one I have. And I don't know how much of that stuff that this community could support without hurting our other family-owned businesses around the area. You know, if people have been there a long time. So, like I said, I'm not really for it or against it, not really sure how I feel right now, until I get enough information and pin them down exactly what they want to do. Because from what I could hear, I couldn't hear too good back there, because I don't have very good hearing anyway, but, but anyways, I, I didn't hear that. I didn't, oh, we're not sure what we're going to do, we can do this, we can do that. I mean, are we going to put a high-rise building in there? What are we going to do? So that's kind of my thoughts about the whole thing.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Uh, could you answer potentially why he may or may not have received one?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. So that's my list of everybody who received a letter. And then right now, we're kind of in flux with our regulations, they're not very clear about who we notify, so we've been notifying everyone adjacent to a property subject to a subdivision or rezoning request. Uh, we're anticipating with the rule update, we're going to change that to everyone within a thousand feet, excluding right-of-way, so that will give us a set standard, but the ones that were notified on this were adjacent, directly adjacent to the parcel.
Okay, well, I, I think that we should do a little better. Now, Alco, Alcova's kind of a little, nice little knit community, and we're all neighbors, and we all know each other. I've known Lori and Alan for quite some time, and I've known, uh, Brian and Jenny Black for quite some time, since they bought Sloans, and I've known Jeanne and Renee forever, and they're the ones that's got the post office. And so I think we all that are kind of Alcova residents should have some kind of say-so in it.
All right. Well, thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals, individuals who wish to speak in opposition to ZC 22-001 to approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, we are Brian and Jenny Black. We currently own Sloans General Store in the end of Alcova. Um, our residence is 22960 Highway 220, so we are up and across the way, in addition to the business. And you know that Sloans has been there for 120 years, so obviously we have a very vested interest. Um, hopefully this letter that you received from us, um, in addition to others we've heard from community members you all have received in your packets, um, that we understand have been sent. So, uh, I guess our, our major concern, I mean, doing our research, and however, we weren't contacted back when we tried to get the specifics of the, the prior change, Mrs. McCartel was the major opponent, um, in addition to several others of us in the Alcova area, when the proposal happened, but, once before. Um, since that time, Mrs. McCartel and her husband sold their property, they purchased the property we're discussing tonight, and also moved their primary residence to Converse County, and they live in the Natural Bridge area now. Um, but they do still maintain their post office box in Alcova. Um, not full-time residents of our community at this point. Um, the concerns of access, as several people have brought up, still remain, and we don't understand how we could just, you know, uh, seems a little premature to be moving forward when, when we know a traffic study still has not happened. Um, we do know that YDOT was contacted, and they were not, from what we understand, um, in favor of moving their facility for where there might possibly be an access road, um, to be able to provide additional easement through, through their property that they have to do an additional, um, commercial property. Of course, as business owners, we're concerned about the possibility of additional, um, commercial properties in the area, but not just for monetary reasons. Uh, the reality is, is that Alcova sees a lot of business in the summertime, and it's a wonderful facility, I mean, it's a wonderful area, and people enjoy the time that they are there. However, the remainder of the year, we struggle to keep our doors open, as I think other businesses in the community could tell you as well. We, uh, we struggle to have employees, um, which Ms. McCartel also referred to, it's difficult to keep them there, uh, because we are slow. The Alcova community itself and the residents there cannot support our business. We're, you know, we are a little bit dependent on whatever comes down the highway. So, you know, those concerns would only be exa- exasperated if there was more commercial property out there, in our opinion, um, because we do really struggle in the wintertime. But yet it's our commitment to still stay open, whether we're making, you know, pittance a day or whatever, the commit, our commitment has been to, to remain open, and we've done that. Um, in last week's planning meeting, both Mrs. McCartel and Mrs. Wilhelm said that the possible zoning change would be part of an, it, or was part of an emerging development plan for Natrona County, and that it was in the public interest. We have not been contacted at all about that possibility, um, to ask what our thoughts are. Like, before, when you were talking about the Casper Mountain thing, it sounded like there were several community meetings, and you, they, you know, uh, looked, looked to the residents to get input and, and possibilities of what would change. We've not been contacted at all. I don't, I can't even say what we would think that, what would be best in the public interest. So I don't know what this development plan for Natrona County is. We do believe that our existing business does kind of serve as a hub, um, for the community at this point, and we think that we're meeting the needs. There are plenty of other, um, community areas that could be utilized, as Mrs. McCartel mentioned, and there, so there's plenty of room for activity, the, the park, the church, the school. So, in our opinion, we just feel like it's premature and really inappropriate, when none of these questions have been answered, to be moving forward on a commercial zoning change, unless there's some plan out there that we don't know about, or something else in the works that we're just not, um, familiar with. Because it, it seemed like, when we watched the planning meeting last week, and then again tonight, that other people have ideas of what might be really good to use in that facility or in this area, but we haven't heard any of that. Um, and so I guess we just have some, some concerns.
All right. Any questions for the Blacks? All right, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing, come on, cut, come out there.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I am Jeannie Renee Rogers. I was born and raised in this community, and in 79, I bought my place out in Alcova, which was a bar, cafe, service station, motel, trailer park, and a post office. And I can tell you, during the wintertime, it was all we could do to hang on, because the traffic does slow down. But what I have found out on this is, they've gone behind everybody's back and told everybody a different story. I just now found out that they wanted to put in a community hall. When Lori came to me, she said something about a pizza parlor out there. Sloans makes the best pizza you've ever eaten. If you want a good pizza, go to Sloans. We don't need another pizza. Then she said something about the, the ice cream. Sloans is known for their ice cream. Everybody stopped. Sloans is a landmark, they've been out there as long as my post office has been. But where I'm going is, and from 79 to now, we have tried to get the Wyoming, the traffic, I can't think of the company, pardon?
DOT.
Yes, to put in a, a lane to where you can turn into our post office. When you come from Casper and turn at my post office, everybody is against the law because they're going across double lines. When you come from Sloans, heading to town to turn into a post office, they raise a, the, the speed limit in Alcova to 70 miles an hour. You try and make a square corner when those trucks are coming off of that hill and get in. But they will not put in a, a side road into our place because the post office is privately owned. And if it's, I have a US, United States Post Office there, and I've been run, I don't run it, the post office runs it. They lease it from me. And they will not put in a turn lane on it because the post office is privately owned. And that's, I've been there 43 years. They want two left lanes put in their place, and with a United States Post Office, I can't get one, I can't imagine them putting one in. I just found out they were talking about doing a community hall. She wanted everybody, she gave everybody a different story. And so everybody is confused as to what they want. I, I don't think we need another pizza shop, I don't think we need another ice cream shop, and it's silly to put in another community hall. Most of the people vote in the school, and we, we have community parties in the park and at the church. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Rogers? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, I'm Drew Thompson, Alcova, Wyoming, 21650 South Cortez Highway. Um, I own four of the properties on that map, one right at the bottom corner. We're not interested in seeing a whole lot of change right there. You know, that traffic coming down that hill is outrageous. There's a mine, there's two mines on top of that hill hauling gravel, hauling aggregate down that hill every day. I was also not properly notified at the big, uh, original meetings. I have not been outreach, I have not been connected to, from Lori suggesting or asking any questions, what should be done with that property. I have had zero input put towards it. I have a tire machine, I have a welder, I have equipment, I'm a small business owner in Alcova, and I know that trying to get employees to come out here and work, especially in the wintertime, it's not, it's not easy. It's costly. Um, the, moving the state sandbox, that, you're moving state property, that's, that's the state sandbox where they get sand for, for all the highways. Where are they going to move that to? Um, you know, I, I was wanting to apply for a, to be able to put in some storage units at one point, and got told, well, you, you're not allowed to do that because of the zoning. Yeah, the zoning out there's, uh, stiff, um, but in nine years of being there, I've had no issues with, with what, what is there, you know? There's, there's a convenience store, there's pizza, there's, there's a bar and grill, there's a, a lot of places- there's a lot of places, you know, and stuff up at the, you know, the hill, there's, up at the lake, there's even more in the summertime, but those businesses close in the summer, because they're not tough enough to stick it out through the winter. I'm not interested in seeing a big building there. I'm not interested in seeing, right next to my Ram Zone property, I'd like to put a house in there and maybe not have, I don't even know about low-income housing. I've considered doing that with some of my property, but a lot of the people out here in Alcova don't want more people in Alcova. You know, we are a tight-knit community, and I think that's about all I got.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against, ZZ two-two-two zero zero one, I now declare the public hearing closed. Question for staff. Mr. Hendry?
Yeah, if this was approved, and would they have to come in before they started another business out there?
Correct. So, the applicants, it is speculative right now, but, you know, I'd note, if they decided not to go through with the subdivision and leave it as Ram, there's a lot more uses that the property's open to in Ram versus commercial. You know, they could have another gravel pit mine right next to them. They could have a heliport. Just looking at some of the uses in Ram versus commercial, the applicants have talked about, you know, for prospective developers, financing is probably easier to obtain, having commercial zoning versus the Ram and the smaller lot size. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Hendry, even before anything is built, that traffic study needs to be done by, for YDOT, and they can't do the traffic study, their engineer can't complete that if he doesn't know, you know, what type of uses going in there, trips per day, maximum vehicles. And, Mr. Chairman, your question, but if YDOT would say no, you know, it's possible, but it's more likely that they would say, "You're putting in a decal lane, you're putting in a left turn lane," and that, as Ms. McArdle spoke to, would financially put them out of development of the property if they don't have the funds to complete the work that YDOT would want. They'd also be subject to building permits, a zoning certificate, and the developments, any development standards that we have for whatever type of business they want to put in there.
Mr. Chairman, I do...
Question, or?
So, if I understand what you just said, if they withdraw that, and they left the entire thing in Ram, they could go in there and do a whole lot more than they would be able to, by subdividing that and turning it into a commercial property?
Correct. I would say that the Ram zoning district right now is a little more open to uses, and more intensive uses than the commercial zoning district.
Okay, so, and I guess I'm saying this so that everybody understands, that if they left it the way it is, they actually could go in there and do what they wanted to do without having to rezone it or do anything else in the process.
Some of the opposition comments I heard, and uses that they don't want to see, are uses that are allowed in Ram right now.
Okay, that's...
That would not be allowed in commercial.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you for your work on this. I had a question, as it relates to the criteria under Chapter ten, Section one C. I see that the, one of the items is that the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community need that was not anticipated at the time of adoption of the Neutrona County Development Plan. And so my question is, how did staff and how did the Planning and Zoning Commission support that element of finding that it was necessary in order to provide land for a community need? I don't think I heard much on that tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, yes, those, I guess they're standards that are in our zoning regulations, require us to meet one of them. I guess we, staff reviewing that, went back to the development plan, and the recommendations within the development plan for the Alcova Pathfinder neighborhood that recommend Ram and some commercial zoning. And so, the applicants have brought forward this piece of property that they'd like to see develop commercially and add to that recommendation. It adds to the recommendation from the development plan.
Commissioner Mill?
Since we got you up there. Looking at the map that you have on screen right now, the purple property is zoned what?
Purple is commercial. Just up past, on the other side of Cortez Road, is part of the Alcova Pathfinder PUD. So they have their specific standards that were set out in the PUD, and then everything else is Ram.
Okay, and the highlighted area that they're looking, is that one parcel currently, or is that broken off, that parcel that extends out to the west?
That, so, that's part of the original parcel. So the highlighted pink parcel, and everything to the west, to that line, that's, it's all one parcel right now. And the simple sub, Canal Ridge, simple subdivision creates the highlighted parcel and the other parcel.
Okay. And last question, real quick. The land plan that you keep referring to, that's online or it's available to the public?
Yes, the 2016 development plan is available to the public, and so it would have been, what, we're going on six years now, since you, since the county did the development plan, and that's when you all would have had the public input meetings, the neighborhood meetings and development of that plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hendry?
The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval. In light of the fact that they probably would have to come back in here and talk about what their future plan is, I would move that we approve zone change twenty-two dash zero zero one.
Is there a second? Commissioner Mill?
I'll go ahead and second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hendry, seconded by Commissioner Mill, to approve ZZ twenty-two dash zero zero one. Further discussion? Commissioner North?
I understand the residents of Alcova and your concerns, but I have a hard time not supporting a zone change when it actually makes it more restrictive than it currently is. You know, if they can do less by having a zone change, that actually is beneficial to you instead of the other way around. And so, we've seen this a few other times, but not very often. Usually, people are trying to rezone things so that they can do more with their property. In this case, they can do less with their property.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hendry?
You know, there, and I understand the people out there may not want this, but that it would compete against existing businesses, and I understand that. But you never know, they might come up with something that might enhance the businesses out there, and until they would come back and tell us what was planned in there, we really don't know that. So it could help that whole area, and as everybody said, it's getting used more and more. That means more traffic, so they will have to do the traffic count, and they've got a lot of hurdles to jump through on a lot of those uses.
Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sympathetic to the idea that one should be able to do what they want with their property, and I'm certainly sympathetic to Alcova being a nice, knit community. I think it is. I think Commissioner Hendry has a good point, that, you know, some development of that area, or part of that area, might really enhance the community and the other businesses in it. My concern is that I don't think that the elements have been met for the requisite showing, and so it's hard for me to vote in favor of this rezoning change.
Commissioner Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alcova is actually pretty near and dear to me. I actually did live out there. The trailer that I lived in isn't there anymore, but I was out there, and this community is very tight. With that said, you know, I really am sympathetic to people with private property that want to do something with their private property, and is it going to have a harmful impact on their neighbors? Right now, from what we're seeing, I don't see it. I hope that they, any future development would be an enhancement to that community, but they're going to have to come back and go from there. I just, I don't know if DOT is going to move forward with this either, but that shouldn't be our basis, is whether they can or cannot move forward with the rezone. And so, I think the conditions have been met personally, and, you know, even though, like I said, it's, I don't like seeing develop myself sometimes, but sometimes it's a good thing, and I hope this is one of them. So I'll probably be in favor of it.
Any other?
I would add, I wish the applicants well. I think, as it appears this will pass, I think you're going to find developing this property and having highway access is probably going to prohibit most of what you want to do. And I empathize with the residents that live out there, the fact that people fly through there, and trying to get off on any, on either side, and especially crossing traffic, is just an absolute nightmare. And, you know, we've had one very serious accident years ago, where some young people were killed. It's one of those areas, and maybe it's something that this commission can actually put on YDOT's list of things that we certainly like to see done in the county. So, with that, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Post saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of MS two-two-zero dash zero zero three, re-subdivision of Lot nineteen, bypass industrial park. The hearing will be conducted according with state statutes, rules of the Neutrona County Commissioner, Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture, and state your name and address for the record. Ms. Nelson, we have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, case number MS twenty-two dash zero zero three, it's the re-subdivision of Lot nineteen in bypass industrial park, and the applicants are proposing to re-subdivide Lot nineteen into two parcels. It's currently nineteen point five acres in size. The two lots will be nine point six and nine point eight, respectively. They're serviced by the Wardwell Water and Sewer District, and the minimum lot size for the light industrial district is a one-half acre with public water or sewer. So no zoning changes requested or required. The Planning Commission reviewed this subdivision at their April twelfth, 2022, meeting and recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval upon completion of all planning considerations. I can answer any questions, and the applicant's agent is in the audience.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Nelsons? All right, there being none. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the major subdivision to approach the lecture. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
You still got my antibiotics with me? Chairman Bertolino, members of the commission, welcome Commissioner Nicolason. Randy Hall, Broker One Real Estate, five fifty North Poplar, representing Hunting Performance. This building was constructed in 2009. Sometime during the initial time, they actually replatted the property from seven lots into one, using the north half of the property as outside storage. They were continuously in operation until about a year and a half ago, they sold their downhole tool division to a rival, and relocated the rest of their divisions to Texas as a result of the downturn in the market. They seek to subdivide the property into two parcels. The building is being sold to the DeVores for a legacy operation of Wyoming Peterbilt, a great location for a truck dealership, and the north parcel will be retained by Hunting, either for future growth. I mean, we can always expect them to come back at some point. So, with that, I would encourage you to vote in favor of the replat. I will also make a caveat that we're up against an environment of increasing interest rates. They have a lock on their mortgage, but we need to get this closed as soon as possible, if you so choose to vote in favor of the replat. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions, or appreciate you listening to me.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you up and about. Anyone else wishing, in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the major subdivision? Good evening, Mr. DeVore.
Good evening. Chairman Bertolino and Commissioners, my name is Fred DeVore, fourteen twenty-one, South Center. And as Randy pointed out, we have a family-owned business, been in Casper since nineteen forty-nine, and we've outgrown our present facility, and it's restricted our growth. My brother was wrong last week. He said we had thirty employees. We actually have thirty-seven here in Casper, and we're consolidating them all into one building instead of the five that we are operating in right now, moving from Mills up to this location, assuming it's all approved. And we don't plan on doing anything hazardous. We have no intention of using the explosives bunker there. I don't know what we'd use it for, it's four-foot concrete, so if you guys have any use, let us know, or any ideas. But I'd be open to any questions, if you all have any.
Any questions for Mr. DeVore?
I've got one.
Commissioner Hendry?
So, you're going to split the property that's outlined in half, or is that the half, you get everything?
We're splitting the part that's outlined, right where it bumps out around the cul-de-sac.
Right.
If you draw a line east-west right there, that's the dividing line between the north and the south half.
Commissioner Hendry, or Commissioner Mill?
Nice facility.
Thank you.
I know, I'm sorry.
Your bunker, is it portable?
No.
Oh, that's too bad. I was going to say, talk to John Winkie at the sheriff's office.
It is very, very permanent, and that's, one of the delays was trying to get the property divided around that, because they built it right on the old property line, and it created quite a mess, but it's very, very... and it created quite a mess, but it's very, very permanent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, no further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There being no others wishing to speak in favor at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the major subdivision to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right. There being no others to speak for or against the major subdivision, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner North?
On issue MS 220-003, resubdiving Lot 19 at the bypass industrial park, I would move, make a motion that we move and accept that.
Okay. It's been moved to ex...
Approve.
Approve MS. Sorry, been a long day. MS 220-003, re-subdivision of Lot 19 bypass industrial park, is there a second?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would second that along with all the finding of facts.
Okay. Been moved by Commissioner Norris, and by Commissioner Hendry to approve MS 220-003, resubdivision of Lot 19 bypass industrial park, along with findings of fact. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
I've really got to thank you for coming to the county. Usually everything's going into Mills or wherever. I would like to see more business coming into the county.
All right. Any other comments? There being none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign, motion carries. All right, we're at the end of our regular meeting at this point. We'd ask those individuals in the audience who wish to address the commission to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and we'd ask that you try and limit your comments to about five minutes. So, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Corey Davison, 16th and East 15th. I'm the Alcova Trailer Park Association President, and just would like to express some concerns that we've had over the past few years. With the lack of updates, improvements, and general maintenance, and in the last 30 years, I personally know of not any improvements inside the boundaries of the trailer court. Sidewalks are breaking down, streets inside the trailer court are breaking down, and sewer lines are failing. I spoke with Michael Brown with the Parks Board about improvements, and he tells me that the trailer court was a private entity and was responsible for its own improvements. I explained to Mr. Brown that we are not a private entity, and the BOR would not allow that. Also speaking with Mr. Brown about additional water charge that was on our bill this year for an overage. How can, trailers in the park do not have meters on them, how can we track this additional use? We pay $115 for trash and water, and it has increased from $100 that was a couple years ago, yet here another fee, which brings another point, why the trailer park fees are always going up and portions of the lake do not. One example, the lease fees at the ski club are less than half of what we're paying for in the cabin and trailer court. They've paid the same fee for years, and our rates keep climbing and climbing. Other concern in the trailers, there was a trailer that was condemned and has not been removed from the trailer court and has been in a holding pattern for a couple years. The concern is with the little kids playing in the trailer court, and we get more and more each year. Safety hazards within, if it has asbestos, and also creating a nesting habitat and unwanted When and what does the trailer park have to do to make sure that we get some of these improvements? The people in the trailer park are getting frustrated and would like some answers of why this isn't happening inside the trailer court. As I speak on behalf of the trailer court, we love our little community out there. We raise our kids in a very rare environment that is totally amazing. We refer to the kids as lake kids. They love the water activities, the sand and swim areas, and they pass along through generations so their kids can enjoy it as well. There's no better place to raise your kids and have your family and enjoy the place we know as Alcova. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Any questions for Mr. Davison?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you for showing up, Mr. Davison. The water use, was that over the time period of last year, or was it a bill from this year?
It said an overage. It would have to have been from last year, since the water's not on this year.
Okay.
As of yet.
And you, and there's no meters per trailer or anything, it's just...
Yeah, there's no meter on my trailer, I know for a fact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hagler, could you, could, could you address a few of those concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Hagler, Neptun County Road and Bridge and Parks. The, the water issue is, is true that the rates went up, everything's going up, electrical power's going up, everything we do out there's gone up, but we, we do not have meters on the trailer park, the 100-plus trailers that are in there. There really isn't a way of doing that realistically for the cost of putting the meters in for the short period of time, and it's never had them. So we have meters on the ski club, the boat club, and the marina, and so we know how much water we pump to the tank, so the difference is divided out into the trailer park, and that's how that's been arrived at for the 20 years I've been here. It is true that the streets need help, that sidewalks need help, and until recently, and I won't speak for the BOR, but prior to, when John Lawson was the director over there, we weren't allowed to spend any money in the trailer park that was lake fund money. Actually, I put that big water tank in and found out later, I shouldn't have spent that money on that water tank that's out there. It was about a $250,000 project. So anyway, all that said, the underground system is old. It consists of asbestos pipe, poly pipe, galvanized pipe. We actually had a water break yesterday. We dug up and fixed. We have another one today that we're losing over 1,500 gallons a minute. We can't find it. So the water's off out there right now. I just came from there, and that's the first, not the first time that's happened. It may go days, it may go all summer before that comes to the surface. We, we have no idea where the water's going. The fees on the trailers, or the garbage, obviously garbage has gone up, fuel's gone up, and we adjusted for that. We also adjusted that in the cabin area. The cabin leases were all prorated. These leases were prorated based on the, the guidelines that we established, they can go up or they can go down. What else was there? The abandoned trailer we're working on, it's had five owners. The owner that had it sold it, I think it's gone to five other people, and legal's been trying to run that down. We can't just pull it out of there until we find out who the owner is, and that sounds very strange, but that's the beast we're working with. And, and it is a rundown trailer. I mean, it'd be easy to have it tore up and taken out of there, but until we can figure out a way of clearing it from ownership, the Bureau wants it out, believe me, and then that lot would go back up for lease, but we're working on that through legal. Anything I missed answering there?
I don't think so. Commissioner Mills?
So this is for the county attorney. The, the abandoned trailer that's out there, is that lot that it's on currently being leased by anybody?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mills, aside, would have to go back to see which one we're specifically referencing. There's been a, a number of trailers that I've been working with Michael Brown on that either weren't renewing, or we had to chase them down for payments, or that were abandoned. And so frankly, without looking at it, I, I don't know which one specifically we're talking about, but I, I do know there's, there's been a couple that have been really problematic. We've had folks die, or the, the trailer's been...
All right, nobody's lived in it or been in this trailer for quite a while.
Yeah, and so I would have to, I apologize, I just off the top of my head don't know.
If, if nobody's paying the lease, it'd seem like...
It's not being paid.
Then it'd be abandoned property.
Yeah, we can just probably abandon it and get it out. Yeah, so that's something, I'll, I'll follow up with Michael on that.
So the, the trash, we just have a standard contract with...
Waste management.
Waste management, and waste management gives us a, a set fee, and if it goes up, you just prorate it?
We prorate it to all, through all the trailers, the cabin area as well, and then we have obviously service at all the campsites, that, that doesn't affect the trailers.
Okay. The, as, as it relates to the sewer, the sidewalks, they won't let you spend money, will they let them spend money? I mean, I mean, this thing's falling, if it's falling apart, I, I mean, dealing with the Bureau of Rec, I know, is a challenge.
It's, it's, it's under different direction now at the Bureau, and we, we will ask that question, but when, when John Lawson was in charge, we weren't allowed to spend money up in there. That's one of the reasons we moved the bathhouse where we did, to come up with a new bathhouse, showers and toilets, and it's however, a, a short walk from the trailer park, but it's still available. The old bathhouse is rundown, needs a roof, has issues with plumbing, freezes every winter regardless of what we do, but, so we've made some improvements. We have not, I think, I, I think the last time those streets were probably ever upgraded, from what I remember, I worked out there as a kid, and they, they did some paving on those streets then, and if there's anything been, there hasn't been anything done since I've been here 20 years, as far as the streets go.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I've heard sidewalks and the sewer and everything else, it sounds like they're, they're actually creating a health hazard by not allowing, public safety by not allowing anything to happen.
I guess I would say careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
The, the sewers all run underneath the trailers at a 90 degrees. I mean, you can't get to them, and you can't get to the water either, it parallels that system. We've talked about putting new water...
So the mains, excuse me, so the mains and everything...
Mains go under the trailers this way.
So they're not out on the street?
No. So you can't just dig them up, and we've, we had one trailer, we almost lost one year because we tried to get under it to fix the main that was broke, and it was very interesting. But we, we've done a lot of work on the water system. We laid new line from the water tank down, but we, it's very difficult to upgrade. I pulled, I pulled sewer line in under, I think it was 12 trailers, probably seven years ago, something like that, because we couldn't get to it, and it was full of roots, so we hired a company to pull new line through and then retap all those trailers, and that's about all you can do, because you would have to literally move these trailers off. And if you understand the history of that site out there, it was originally a pull-on, pull-off, overnight camping, and so everybody pulled in, pulled out, and then it evolved into these trailer homes that have moved in, and some are very elaborate. But when we have these water breaks, sewer we can kind of deal with, it's not as a big of issue as the water, but when those lines break under those trailers, it's a nightmare. And so, you know, we've talked about putting them behind the curb, putting a whole new system out there, but you're, you're looking at millions to do that, and, you know, you got to weigh that out, and I, I don't know what the Bureau would respond to that.
So who owns the lines right now?
Well, the county operates them.
I understand that, but...
They're on Bureau, they're on Bureau property. The tank is on county property. We have an easement up to the water tank, so the tank you could, for all purposes, say is the county's.
But the water lines that are currently out there, is that technically the Bureau of Recs?
Yes.
Okay.
We manage it.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I know that, that Mike talked about the sewer lines and going down in between the trailers, and I remember this ever since I got here, but, you know, we may be able to attack those one by one. I know, right when I got on the commission, that was like in 2006, we had a big discussion about power, and, and that whole trailer court, there wasn't even enough power to Alcova to provide what the breakers that they needed in there, and, and over time, we got it fixed, and everybody's got good boxes, and, and they're up to code, or they were at that, when they got installed.
No, they still are. That was a total upgrade. There's still a shortage of power out there at times, but it's a lot better than it used to be, and, and everybody's legal and has the right pedestals, and I really can't rec... I believe some lake fund money went into that, and I'm not too sure if some of the resident or the leases didn't pay some of that as well. Can't remember, but, you know, and that, that evolves through different management at the Bureau, how they look at all this, and here again, we're in a change right now. I could, I could pose the question again and, and, you know, get it on the drawing board for a, a engineered study of, of a new water system. It's about all we can do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any else? Okay. Mr. Davison, I, I didn't know what you were talking about when you were doing your figures, so if you had some other comment?
The space I was talking about was 134.
Oh, that, that has...
The trailer.
Okay, all right. Anyone else wishing to, yes, sir? Good evening.
I'm Bill Mills, from a longtime Mills Livestock Company, and we had a, have had a concern over the years. When they redid Poison Spider Road, we poisoned, West Poison Spider out there, the, they put it in an area which was not as good for livestock because of the growth of greasewood and hiding them, being on the highway, we've had multiple incidents, and I thought, will there be a time, because it's also narrower than the rest of the highway coming in towards town, and so there's safety concerns with large trucks going back and forth, or meeting, and then wide loads, whatever, and then the public safety thing with the livestock, and so at that point, when they did that, they would have fenced it. Well, that time has come and gone. I understand that was put in in 63, and wow, that's a long time ago, but, you know, we've dealt with it, but we had bands of sheep. We didn't want the highway shut off, because we just kept, we grazed on either side at times, and so that was my concern that my dad had. I always wanted to have it fenced because it made gathering cows or doing whatever our jobs easier, but there's also been now some property changes. We just did one the last of, of December, that on the south side of Poison Spider is not ours anymore. We lease back for grazing. That's just what it is, but I believe the highway should be fenced, and if they're going to ever redo the road, would they widen the easement? And if we did that and had a fence in line, then they had to change the fences out, that'd be a waste of money, I would think. I think it ought to be coordinated together somehow. I've talked with the state, because there's state land involved, there's BLM land involved, and some of our private yet, on the north side of the road, and I have, we have some of the area being fenced now, but it's not along, right along the highway exactly. The state year, a few years back, well, 10, I don't know more, had extended some of their fence that we had fenced forever on part of that new road, and, you know, we coordinated with them, did what, went across private land down towards Poison Spider Creek, trying to keep down the people that would go out there, shoot, and leave all their trash. You, you have had multiple areas that you've had to deal with, not concerned, but that's just what I would like to bring to you, and I have an application that I'll send into the state for state land improvement, I guess, deal. And I have an application that I'll send in to the state for state land improvement, I guess, deal. I don't know what they'll do with, when that, how long it'll take to accept. I've talked with the BLM land and when we get that state okay that they're gonna do something, maybe they'll see what they can do on their portion, which is a good portion. Our private part is the smallest part. And I didn't know what the county would put into it. I've talked to Rob, talked to Dave. I haven't talked to Jim, but I've, not about this anyway. But, uh, you know, he's out there close to where the old, where they finished doing and now need to go on, past Oregon Trail Road. And that's just what I'm kind of bringing, hoping to get something going. I've even talked with Mike Hagler from Road and Bridge. And he said, well, he's sent, he has had to do what you guys said, you know, what you can get in your budget to do. And I know it's not just a cheap project, especially anymore, but neither is fencing, as we know. Anyway, that's what I'd like to bring. Any questions?
Uh, any questions? Commissioner Hendry?
You know, I, uh, I knew about the fence project and then I knew you were doing some. But as far as where you're doing, if the road was ever built up, it would not take out your fence. But I did talk to Mike and, and I was in hopes there was at least some planning money and maybe some money to, to work on that road and, and go all the way out, uh, to the other intersection, the other end of it and just redo that highway. Cause it's pretty narrow, just like you said. And, and at that same time, we might be able to fence it in that same contract. But just to go out and fence it is, it'd be a little tough right now.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just what, you know, thought, well, who needs to do the funds? It's for improvement for the public, a safety aspect. I know, well, you probably know Don Dodds. And he, you know, when he trucks, it bothers him. When he's meeting people on the, excuse me, on that section. And then a neighbor of ours, newer neighbor, does some trucking too, and he's, has his own concerns that way too. So I'm not the only one in the, that, you know, looks at it that way. I'd say everybody from the oil field industry would look at it that way because safety is a factor.
You bet.
And whatever, you know, I don't know where you can get additional funds or anything else to get a project going soon. I know that Mike has problems keeping their potholes fixed out in that area. And we couldn't believe how this big one, it took so long to get something fixed, you know, into it. And we, you know, talked back and forth about that and he did get it done. But, uh, you know, somebody not from me or with it and just run up on the big pothole like that, especially if they have traffic coming and distractions. Same way with a baby calf going out there. I found one this last spring and I don't know if there's more or not. I don't look on every brush where they might go off and die, but I didn't know of one. And, uh, you know, we've had incidents of cows and they were even up in an area where you'd think you'd see them. But at eighty miles an hour, you're get, you get to a cow pretty fast and they decided they need to cross the road or whatever, you're done. You know, you can't put on the brakes fast enough, I suppose. Total tour of vehicles. She hit one in the spring and one in the fall. I think she would've learned. But that's just what I bring in. If there's any other questions or whatever, but...
Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Mills, for coming and speaking with us tonight. About how many miles of fence are we talking about?
What do we figure, Brendan? This is my nephew and he travels, uh, two to four times a day up that road.
Yeah, my name is Brendan Eberhard and I live at 20750 West Poison Spider Road. And I do travel. And our section of the highway would be about five miles of that section that goes along our property. Like I said, we talked about the highway, how far up you'd want to go for the oil traffic. I don't know how much further that'd be up to Poison Spider Oilfield. I really don't know.
Well, the planning, the planning be clear to the, the intersection up there where Poison Spider and Striker turns off.
Right.
From there, clear back to the new part at the, at the, uh, Poison Spider School just up on the hill.
I will say, as far as that highway goes, this winter I pulled out five people who ran, got run off the road by trucks personally. I know one truck that went off the road, I don't know if that got reported. I will say there is also another pretty big pothole forming out there that if you hit it, it's, it'll make you bounce at fifty miles an hour.
Mike gets tired of talking about my potholes, so...
Right.
Got some more.
Yeah, it's, oh, boy, they never end. But they do last longer when you have a road fixed. To the current conditions, it may be, you would do a stronger road. I don't know how that all works. A little detail for a dummy like me, but it, whatever works.
I'm not having that road very often. I just take a drive out there. But has the, has there been additional development out there, uh, you know?
Well, they're talking about some there on the south side of the road of the property we sold that was private. And I understand there's gonna be a meeting about it on May tenth or something about, uh...
Re-zoning?
Zoning of it. Cause it's, you know, it's just agriculture, mining, whatever that we had earlier. And to be private ten-acre lots or something where, so I thought, well...
It sounds like it's gotten busier over the years and it might be getting, it sounds like it's been getting busier over the years and it might be getting a little busier out there in terms of traffic. Hey, thank you.
Commissioner Mill? Thanks for coming in tonight. That five-mile chunk that you're talking about, is, is that five miles private or is that, what, what portion is private?
That was state, BLM and private.
That's state, BLM and private. Um, the private, I don't even know sure it would be even a mile of that. The majority of that would be BLM.
Okay, and you're talking one side or both sides?
We go across the school section, so you know that's a mile.
Right.
And then there's a mile past that?
Yeah, mile past that.
Uh, for a BLM on one side. And then on the other side, there's at least two miles.
Yep. We would be, it would be, to keep the cows for the public safety would be both sides. However, the, one state section is all, the state had already fenced.
Okay.
So that's on the south side would not have to be done.
Right. Okay. All right. Uh, if you sent, if you send a letter to the wife or whoever, would you make sure, would you make sure we're CC'd in it?
You know, I figured that back in the day when they were gonna fence it, at the time they put that road in, there was probably okays all around it, what it had would've been. I don't know what all's involved if you want to do a road to county through public land. I mean, it's getting worse all the time as we know.
Yeah.
That's just, and I'm, you know, it's fascinating, I'm working now. I want to see it before I keel over.
Thank you for coming in.
Give us your address for the record, would you? Give us your address for the record.
14-500 West Poison Spider Road.
Okay, same one.
Same.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission tonight? There being no one else? Commissioner comments. Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what to say other than I'm grateful to be here and I'm excited for the future. This county is real special to me and, um, you know, just looking forward to, uh, helping out as best I can. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendry?
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, you may say something about this. We had three really good candidates for, uh, that the, uh, Central Committee pushed forward for us. And, uh, congratulations, Mr. Nicolason, Commissioner Nicolason. I see, you know, I mean, he's gonna be a good addition. He did hit the ground running tonight, we could tell. So, uh, anyway, just welcome. Now, if you can make it rain out in our country, you'll be all right.
Commissioner North?
Congratulations, new commissioner. Glad to have you on board. And I think you're gonna change the complexion of the commission a little bit. So, and that's not, not, not a bad thing. We do look forward to working with you in the future. And there's a lot of stuff going on in the world right now. And, uh, and a lot of it is affecting all of us in different ways. I did, I was happy to see that a federal judge banned the mask mandate on the airplanes and other places. I don't know how many of you have traveled, but after traveling to Alaska last year and spending almost twenty-four hours in an airport, I don't do very well with a mask on that long. So I'm, I'm happy to see that that has been lifted. We do want to thank everybody for coming, especially for public comment. Because there's a lot of times that we don't hear about a lot of things until we hear it in the public comments. And, um, we appreciate the emails, we appreciate the different people that have contacted us over different things. But I personally do appreciate the time that you spend coming in here and talking to us personally instead of just sending an email. That does mean a lot, I know to myself and I know it does to everybody else that's on the commission. So, thank you.
Commissioner Mill?
I too would like to congratulate you. Job well done. For everybody that put their name in, it's, it's a task, it's something to go and stand in front of that many people, to be selected as three and then come in as one of three and be basically grilled on questions you have no idea are coming and completely off the wall. Job well done. And I'd like to thank everybody for the nomination sort of lukewarm thing tonight. I'm not gonna bring the style Brooke had. I'm not near as purty. But I hope, I, I pray that I, I, I bring to the, the vice chair's, as, with her grace and, and maybe a little less energy than she had. I'll, I'll do my best. Like Dave said, though, there are changes out there. Right now, the administration finally decided to, uh, start the lease program again with federal leases. Only now they're up in the, the, what, the taxes.
Royalties.
Royalties by fifty percent. So, and, and they haven't cut any of the red tape on getting the lease going. So it's, it's, it's kind of a slap in the face, um, to that industry. I hope it gets solved eventually. I, I believe our governor is working on it and I have faith that he'll get something done.
Okay. As I said beginning, uh, we're very excited to have, uh, Peter Nicolason be our fifth commissioner. He's hit the ground running, uh, has not been bashful about participating, which is good cause those, the rest of us that got, uh, put in, through the same process, kind of sat around for six months wondering, what the heck do we get ourselves into? But we're very excited to have him on board. I echo the, uh, I appreciate the public coming in. Uh, I always say we're not clairvoyant and we don't know if problem exists until somebody tells us quite fre, quite frequently. That doesn't mean we can resolve it, uh, but we will work to, to try and do it. The lake's always been a, a challenge dealing with the Bureau of Rec. It would be very nice if we could figure out a way to get an act, cause it does take an act of Congress, to, uh, get that, get those lands turned over for public, to the public that could be acquired and take the Bureau of Rec out. It's not just Alkova, it's all the dams that the Bureau of Rec manages that has, uh, public lands in behind them. Yeah, and I think that's about it. Uh, I feel, I feel, I hope Brooke's watching tonight. It, Brooke, it was only, it was only an hour and forty-five minutes for Peter. It wasn't the, uh, four hours or whatever that she was sitting there. Yeah, so with that, word earned.